And here we go. We are now recording and I'm speaking to?
Christopher Dare, K R I S D O P H E R D A H I R.
Thank you, sir. And if I may ask, for those who may not know who you are, who are you, sir?
Well, I have a few different things, a different hats I wear. Probably most importantly is I'm a husband and a father. We've been married 28 years with my lovely bride Melissa. I have two grown children, Adam and Noah. My oldest is married and my youngest, they're both doing great, 26 and 23. And truly probably the best titles I have in line. But I'm also a city councilman for the city of Sparks. I'm serving my second term now. The last term, I did not have someone run against me, so I had the pleasure of staying in my seat pretty easily. I can tell you the job, I love it and I get to do that. I've been in my life, I'm originally from Las Vegas and grew up there. Moved up here about 13 years ago. And I've pastored for 30 years at different churches. And then currently am the chaplain for the veterans home here in Sparks. I have ran private education for many, many years, like 15, 17 years. And so now I actually am helping to run a new Christian college that has begun in the area.
So you're a fairly busy guy.
A little bit, there's a few more things, but I don't know how much of a list you want.
Well, it depends, depends. I think the general stuff helps to understand, you know, your level of involvement and to understand who, you know, Chris the man is, you know, the family man, the public servant, the man of the church, and also a community, a member of the community. So that helps give me a broad illustration of who you are there.
Very cool.
And so what's prompted our call tonight is that you've made an announcement fairly recently to seek another office. Is that correct?
Yes, so I'm honored to have the chance to run for the Secretary of State for the great state of Nevada. And I'm currently, like I said, city councilman now. It's midterm for me and so the nice thing about this particular run is one is Barbara Segaski, current Secretary of State, she's turned out, so it becomes Elko City, which I wouldn't have ran against her and I don't like running against incumbents necessarily. And then I also, if something were to happen, I don't win. I do get to retain my seat as city council because I love doing my job. But I see an opportunity to do something that I think I can help and I could step in and maybe bring something to our state with a little different approach potentially.
So you're planning to run for Secretary of State or in the process of doing this. What, if given the chance to serve as our next Secretary of State, you know, presuming you're able to succeed in the primary and you're also able to succeed in the general election, what do you want to do?
Well, I want to, I want to step in and make sure, and this is any seat I run in, so this is kind of important for those who know me. And if they know this, but if you don't know me, when it comes to politics, I think sometimes it's difficult to watch because I watch sometimes people treating each other very badly. I teach leadership in the college and have done for many years. And even in other countries, part of what I do is teach leadership principles. And I really don't believe we need to continue to tear each other down to leave. And so one of the things I'd like to believe I can do is bring that to our state and bring that to the leadership or whatever role I have. And so political, I know politics sometimes looks like it's just a difficult place to be. I'd like to believe in valuing people and we can do a little something different and show that. At the same time, I do believe that there's strong standards to make. I have been a Republican all my life and there are things I believe in and I think it's important to step in and to bring some of those values. When it comes to, obviously, I mean, the headlines have been clear. There's been a lot of questions about the voting and this, the that, and how that went and then maybe what people think should have went. I'm pretty aware that the Secretary of State's job is to pretty much follow the law. And so legislators are the ones who create that law. And so I would encourage many, if they do not like what's there, that you should really go talk to legislators and ask them to change that in the governor. And so, but I do believe when there's change, his response, you know, we want to step up and try to communicate those changes. And so I think with all the changes that keep being made or, you know, how we vote things, I think we just have to step up clearly and communicate. So for me, I think that's important. So I want to get in and really take a look at each of the voting components, especially some of the newer ones, and open it up and show people how it works and let people understand why it's safe and why it's good. Or if there's something to be worked on, I want to work on it. When it comes to businesses, that's crucial for me. It's really 80% of the job of Secretary of State is really making sure our new businesses who are coming in get registered and get set up for success. And I want to help make sure that that happens, especially coming out of COVID. Another roles I play, I'm the President of the Nevada League of Cities and Vice Chair of Economic Development for the National League of Cities. So I'm very involved in economic development. And so to me, this is crucial as well, making sure that that is in place and we are really rolling forward as a state the best we can.
So you're taking a comprehensive look at the job of Secretary of State as their role in the state constitution, not so much the big story, as they'd say?
Well, I think you have to. I think you have to pay attention to both because the story matters. You know, I get that people are upset, people have questions and I think you'd be naive to step in and not realize that. However, when I do arrive there, my job will be to do the job and to make sure that's fully there. When it comes to dealing with conflict or dealing with people who are upset, it's one of my roles I've played as a pastor. I've done a lot of counseling for people or at least walking with, in life with people. And so I'm, one, I'm not scared of conflict or stepping in and ready to make a difference. But I think it's important to kind of just listen to the conversation and try to answer questions the best we can. And that's really one of my goals, to make sure that's in place. The, I think when it comes to the culture of what we're watching happen, obviously, there's a lot of things that are thrown all over the place and have been said. And to me, I don't necessarily share all of the same opinions. And part of it, I'll say this, and I don't mind saying it very clearly. I've known Barbara Segaski for many years since I was young and she's a family friend, she knew my father, my late father who passed away. And she's served our state very well for the last 26 years. And I think she's upheld the law. And I know this last race, I mean, I kept up with her here and there and I know it was very difficult to kind of go through all the different things. But I would say that she's a woman of integrity and I would not be one to ever question her on that because I just know her and what I've seen. And so I, some of those things I don't join in it. But I would say that I think we do have, and if Barbara was going to stay in office, she'd have the same job I would of making sure people's questions are answered to the best of our ability.
Okay. So I hear a very clear position of how you stand on this issue and I think that helps kind of guide my next question because, you know, with all the controversy that we've had to deal with from that position in the post-COVID era and we've just, we're in the shadow, or at least the after shadow of a very contentious presidential election and general election. You know, why do this job? Why submit yourself to this rigor?
You sound like a friend. You know what's funny? I've had friends come and say the same thing to me because especially, because I really love what I do as a councilman and it's going very well, I have a lot of support to do the job I'm doing and people are saying, are you crazy? You know, and, but the one thing for me is I very much care about our state. I grew up in Las Vegas, I've been a part of that all my life. And I've watched a lot of different things and I do believe that leadership matters. And I think during this time, it's going to require leaders who are willing to step off, look past some of their own personal party lines at times, even create bridges, work together. But especially to require us to find ways to find answers. A lot of times people think critiquing is a leadership skill when it's really not. I teach leadership for business and everything and that's not one skill we teach because that's actually, anybody can do that. But not anybody can go in and look at a situation and try to find the answers and try to find and make something better. And so that's why, I'd like to believe I can bring that. I don't believe I'm the only one that can. I think other people, I'm sure, have those skills and abilities. But I know what I bring to the table, I think it's proven. If you walk, if you watch how I work in our region, I get along with everybody. It does not mean that I'm weak, it doesn't mean that I don't stand up for what's right. I just do it in a manner that hopefully brings everyone to the table.
Okay. So your approach is you're going to try to be a collaborative, you know, a collaborative person that can bring people together and find solutions and try to cooperative, collaborative, you know, consensus builder?
It's the only way I know how to lead. You hit it on the head. And I look forward to serving it. And part of that means, you know, it's one thing to say it because I think people throw all kinds of things out there. But there's a hard list of really taking the time to listen to people who are frustrated or don't agree. And that's not always easy to do, but in my life, I've taken the time to do so and I believe it pays off. And so I'm willing to take the time to listen to those who would say that they don't agree with me or they're just upset, you know. There's a place to have that conversation and I hope to have those conversations.
Fair enough. That kind of leads me to the state of politics in Nevada today. And, you know, you kind of hit this pretty well, but I kind of want to hit solo because the, as we both have observed, it's a pretty acrimonious and pretty partisan affair lately in reference to, you know, one side or one team, so to speak, or one party after another in the public sphere. And in that atmosphere, how do you plan to run, not just your messaging campaign, but not just your, you know, your campaign, but how do you plan to talk to people and reach out to new voters and voters?
Well, I think, one of the things that I'm counting on, I'd like to believe, is who I am already and what people know of me. I'm asking them to tell people, that's part of my goal here. In Vegas, I was a pastor for 15 years. My family's pretty well-known in Vegas. My father actually wrote the theme song for Las Vegas. His name is George Dare, he passed away a couple of years ago. And he's written a lot of theme songs and sang all over the state. And so our family, and even in my life, though I am Republican, have been all my life, it's not been my first part of my conversation with people. When someone would come into church, I wouldn't ask them if they're Republican or Democrat. I just love them, we just do what, we just care for people. And so in my world, even as a city councilman in Sparks, I don't work on streets for just Republicans. We work with everybody, on everything we do is for everybody. And so it's not my lead conversation necessarily. And so with that though, I think that's the key is first valuing them as humans. That's my approach. But also I think my track record, I hope, really makes a difference and that those who really know me and have worked with me can say that I am that team builder that we talked about.
Fair. And talking about outreach and building consensus and, you know, problem solving, what do you think is going to be, you know, if you were elected, what do you think is going to be the biggest challenge or the biggest problem you're going to face as the incumbent Secretary of State of Nevada in 2022 or 2023, January?
So when stepping in, I think the first thing you have to do is make sure for any disenchanted voters, that they can understand the process. And I do know there's some bills that could even change it some more that they're looking at now and things. And change does happen and I have my opinions on some of the change and I, you know, but I am very aware of getting in there that no one's asking me to vote on that. I'm not a legislator at that point, so you don't get to do that. You know, you need to bring things to the table. But I hope there are enough respects from even other legislators that if I had an idea for voting and make it safer, better, more well-spread for everybody, I hope that we want to listen to the expertise we bring to the table. And so, but I do think there's going to be some definite hurdles with voting that needs to be there, but it's more making sure that people feel at ease and they trust somebody. And that's part of what I hope to bring to the table too, is that when I get in there and I get out and I say, hey, look, this is why it's safe, this is why this works. Or even if that's good, if there's something I find I don't like. Either way, the people would trust me, to be ready to trust me and move forward or trust me in order to make change. But I think one of the bigger lists for everybody is really as with our economics, we've been shut down as a, you know, because of the pandemic. And this is something very real to me. I know too many businesses who have closed their doors. And we know some of them hopefully are going to want to come back. Hopefully some new businesses begin. And I am a big supporter of our smaller small and paw and family business. And so I want to help make sure that as these unique spheres come and we pull ourselves out of the situation we're in, that the Secretary of State office is there, ready to help, almost in a sense of a concierge business, you know, ready to really step up and bring customer service to those people who need it.
That's fair, okay. And thank you for that. Thank you for giving me a very clear, again, another clear assessment of what you intend to do in that area.
Sure, yeah.
So now I guess into the politics of this, my geekiness is now going to kind of take over a little bit. What's the, I guess, if you can speak to this to the level you can, what's the plan of attack to win this thing? You know, you've got a primary, you've got to run into a Republican primary. You have an opponent and then you've got a potential general election. You might have a Democratic opponent as well. How do you plan to pull this race off?
Well, I plan to pull this race off, one is working really hard. I currently, if you still have the boards I serve on, you'll say, oh my gosh, this guy's crazy. He works a lot. And so for me, I am trying to, the ones that are not for the city, there are boards that I'm removing, I'm saying goodbye for now and just saying I got to refocus, so some of it's timing. But then I plan to be there. I mean, I've been down to Vegas already four or five different trips. I'll be there on Tuesday for some more meetings and meeting with Republican groups, making sure they know who I am. But the neat thing going in there is, like I was at a meeting, one of my first meetings when I went down to Vegas, I walked in and I started talking to some of the people and then one of them said, oh, I think your dad's been at my wedding 30 years ago. I'm like, oh, yeah, he did, that's right. And I, so we talked a little about that. And then another person said, hey, you married us. It's so funny, so our lives have intertwined with so many people in Las Vegas that that's one area that I'm hoping continues to grow is that the ones who know me and my family stand up and say, you know what? This is the guy we want, is that this is the person that's going to help what we're looking for. When it comes to, in our area in the north, I strongly believe that the work I do speaks for itself and I will continue to work very diligently in whatever board I'm on, whether it's the Nevada Veterans Memorial that's being built, like the president of that, I'm on Vice Chair of Top Wall, the Health Board, you name it, all these different things I get to serve on. I hope to make those stands that are needed and lead strong, but also build those bridges. Now in the Royals, it's relationship. As the Nevada League of Cities President, I actually get to be already in the Royals. I'm all, I work with everybody consistently. So some of that's nice, but I think it's going to take me getting there. And so I'm working on setting up meetings, going out to Republican meetings where I can. On the Republican front, it's just relationship, relationship, relationship. When it comes to the politics of the Republican Democrat, I really do believe it's independents who decide at the very end of it all who's going to lift these things because of the charmed mouth of all the independents that are sitting there. And so I hope that the message I have is one that brings hope in the sense that I'm not here to drive people through the mud. I mean, I even tell people, and I have people asking who you're running against. Because I thought, I didn't come running against anybody. I think we're both running for the same thing, we want to help people. And I know some will say that might be my, you know, of course you're running against someone. But there is something to this, that, you know, the people who are running for the same office are not my enemy, even if they're Democrat, I don't see them that way. The people who have hopefully the same heart I do and want to make a difference. I just know what I bring to the table and what kind of leadership I bring. So I hope to make sure that's really clear.
To have a quick tangent on that, because I think you kind of hit on the issue of reaching out and trying to, again, bring back consensus and try to bring, you know, everyone together to a degree. Do you worry that this position that, you know, that you're running for has become overly partisan? Or is now becoming seen as a partisan position?
You know, you mean like in a sense that it's not strong enough or Republican side or whatever? Is that what you mean?
Yes. Yes, as in people perceive the, a office holder should be an advocate or a zealous advocate for their side in some shape or form?
You know, I, yes, without question, I think that's one of the, one of the things that you never know on how people will respond. So far, people have responded really well. A part of it is there's a balance in this. I think, I think being kind and building bridges does not mean you're not an advocate. That'd be the one thing I say. Because like you said, if you've watched me in meetings, I'm not quiet and I definitely get things done. And it's not because I'm quiet, it's not because I just sit back in the corner saying, we just need to cool by y'all. We actually get things done because we challenge each other and work forward. But it's just to be done in a manner of respect, in a manner of relationship. So, but I do, I do think there are times I wonder, you know, is, has politics gotten to a place where it'll allow somebody who's not willing to get up and bash somebody else? I don't know. I know I'm not going to be that person though. I've never been that person. And I have everything from my kids and anybody else who knows me who would be very confused if I started acting that way.
And I just want to clarify, your position is you want to be an advocate for the position, not a partisan actor, so to speak. Is that kind of a clear assessment of that?
I'd be an advocate, I'd be an advocate for the Republican Party. I don't have a problem saying that because I do believe in our Republican values. And so I want to be careful I'm not, that we're not, means in words here because I don't know, I don't want to say that. But I think one of the wisest things that Republicans can do is to make sure we find the areas that we can reach across the aisle and reaching the independent party and make sure that we are bringing people alongside. So to me, I think that's a wise strategy, not a, not actually asking to the other side by any means.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. I wanted to understand what you're saying because I, it made sense what you were saying, but I wanted to be clear because I didn't want to make it sound like I muddled two questions together.
Thank you. Because I don't, I mean, I say this, please, I don't want to come across by any means that I'm not standing up as a Republican. I am Republican, I know I'm Republican and I'm honored to be, I've been all my life. And, you know, any piece of the politics can get interesting at times. It goes through its seasons where you're scratching your head and you're watching, you're like, what is going on now? But, yeah, so you know, you've been involved.
Yes.
And so, but for me personally, it doesn't change the values I stand on. But I also, like I said, it really does come down to, there is a, there is a way to be a gentleman but there's also a way to lead strong at the same time. And I think people honor that, at least in my world, I've seen it. Again, I would say it might be approached that there are some that don't take that approach and that could really set us apart potentially of who I am compared to somebody else.
Fair enough, fair enough. And I guess as we reach the close of our conversation tonight, you know, I feel like I've gained a deeper understanding of where you're coming from. You know, you seem, it's actually one of the things I've noticed is that there's a calm, a very calm, very measured, very, you know, focused attitude you have and it's rather kind of refreshing because I'm used to, especially when we're talking about positions such as the Secretary of State's position, you know, kind of a flows of passion sometimes, so it's actually rather refreshing.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I'd say this, because some people want to, you know, this would be one way I'd say it is in the Christopher Dare Secretary of State office, we'll work together to solve problems in a proactive manner. We'll think outside the box and utilize resources, but strongly, strongly work together to make sure that's strong. And so to me, I do believe this particular seat is the referee to all voting. And I want to make sure that it's done well and done correctly. And, but I think it can be done in a manner that doesn't dishonor people.
Fair. And I guess in closing, you know, as you're on the hustings, you know, meeting new people, going out and trying to get the name out, you know, and going crisscrossing state of Nevada from Elko to Las Vegas to, you know, Tonopah to, you know, wherever you need to go. What do you have to say in closing to the folks out there that are interested in your campaign, you, that I haven't asked you tonight?
Well, I'd say that my background is people and leadership. My degrees are in organizational leadership. My experience definitely brings challenges to the table and then we solve them. And I hope that you give me a chance to say hello and get to know you and let me earn your vote. Let it be something that instead of just making a decision based upon a name or a party, that you take a moment and say, hey, who's this guy Christopher Dare?
Fair enough, sir, fair enough. And do you have a website or a place that people can go to check out your campaign?
I do. You can go to kdair.com, that's K D A H I R dot com.
Thank you for that. I always, not I'm giving you a plug, but I always like to, you know, give folks a place to go so they know where to look, so they kind of start their research process. So thank you for that.
Not a problem.
At this point in the interview, we exchanged email addresses and contacts so to continue the conversation. And that's why I need to separate this section away from the actual interview. So if you're wondering why you're hearing my voice this time, it's frankly to fill the space that I had to cut out of the part of the interview. Nevertheless, you didn't miss anything, folks. I just wanted to let you know, that's why you're hearing my voice this time. Mr. Dare has made a commitment to continue being engaged in talking to me and the community throughout his campaign run and that is something he's likely to continue. So now back to the interview with Sparks City Councilman Chris, Christopher Dare.
Here's my commitment to you as well, on a personal note. When I'm in office now or then, whatever seat I have, I'm always available for a conversation. And I'm one that does, I like putting what is happening out there and talking about it and being in front. I think that's what's going to be required of this next season, is leadership upfront that's really clear because people want questions. And so I ask and hope that this is not our last conversation.
Oh, it won't, it won't. I'll try to stay plugged in and checking in with, you know, not just you but your other competitors to see how the state of the race is going because this is going to be probably one of the most, one of the most important races in a long time, just simply because of the tension raised, but also because of the issues on the table. So you're definitely importantly raised the issue of business and business management and how that is done because your office handles licensing and administration of events and corporations and whatnot.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. Well, I appreciate your time, thank you for reaching out and truly hopefully you got the information you needed and.
You did. Again, this is another section I had to kind of take out because we had to exchange some other details in reference to technical elements of this interview. So I want to explain why you're hearing my voice again. So there's no concern or illusion that you're missing anything. So again, back to the interview for candidate for Secretary of State, Chris Dare, Sparks City Councilman. I'm greatly appreciative of your time tonight, especially because I just did a piece on Barbara Segaski's situation and now I have been doing a, I'm doing my due diligence of who's involved in the race and what they're wanting to do, especially from this neck of the woods.
Thanks, man. Perfect. I'll see you out there, sir. Thank you, Doc.
You're welcome, Chris. And you have a good night, sir.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. You, too.
Well, thank you. Good night. End of interview. End of interview. Recorder.